Recording in progress.
Good evening. I'm Matthews Mayor John Higden. Welcome to our November tenth, two thousand twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to start by saying that as I drove home from church yesterday in my neighborhood, I noticed some young boys playing with no shoes and no shirts on. It was eighty degrees, and as I drove here tonight, it was snowing. So welcome to the South and the weather we have here. Like to start with some introductions. On my left and your right is our Assistant Town Manager, Malia James, Commissioner Renee Garner, Commissioner Ken McCool, our Mayor Pro Tem Gina Hoover, our Interim Town Manager Kurt Walton, our Town Attorney Daniel Peterson, Commissioner Mark Tofano, Commissioner Leon Threet, Mr. John Urban is not here tonight, our Town Clerk Lori Canapino, our Communications Coordinator Maureen Ryan, and our Planning Director Jay Kemp. I'd like to start with invocation from our Mayor Pro Tem.
First, I'd like to start by wishing United States Marine Corps a happy birthday. Two hundred and fifty years. Okay, with tomorrow being Veterans Day, I would like to say a prayer for our veterans, please. If you would like to bow your heads, please do so. I give thanks today for the men and women who have served with courage and sacrifice. Their dedication reminds me of the cost of freedom. Bless all veterans with peace of mind, healing in body, and hope for the future. Be close to those who carry unseen wounds and restore them with your grace. Help us honor their service not only with words, but also with care, respect, and gratitude. Teach us to never take their sacrifices for granted. Lord, surround veterans and their families with your protection, and let them feel the deep appreciation of a grateful nation. May they know lasting honor, comfort, and rest in you. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the Town Manager if there's any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we request that you add a second closed session to Agenda Item Fifteen to consider real property acquisition.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Motion from Commissioner McCool, second from our Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Earlier tonight, I had the, along with everyone else on the board, had the opportunity to have dinner with our Matthews One-on-One participants. We want to recognize them tonight. So are we going to just have them come forward? How y'all doing? Yeah, we'd like to thank everybody. For those of you that don't know what Matthews One-on-One is, it's the opportunity for citizens to come and meet with staff, all of our departments, and the elected body culminates with a dinner. Maureen was our esteemed leader, and she's done, I think, ten of these now. And we have some of the participants that participated here this evening, and they will, we're going to recognize them with some certificates. And I understand some goody bags that have Matthews swag in them, so that's pretty exciting. So we'll go ahead and start. As I call your name, as I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. Susan Hartman? You don't have to hold your applause to the end. Susan Hartman! Stay up here, please. Monique Brooks? Yes! This is suitable for framing. Catherine Hibbert? Thank you, Catherine. Judy Hughes? Thank you, Judy. Les Hutchins? Les is the manager of our library downstairs. So give him applause for that. Eric Pagua? Mike Trice? And Joel Trice? Tiffany Thompson? Thank you, Tiffany. Isabella Collins? Christine Schroeder? Jimmy Underwood? Jennifer Garrity? I think I know her from somewhere. Thank you. Judy Graber? So we're going to take a photo. We're going to have to get a lot closer than this, and I'd like to ask all the elected officials to come forward as well. There you have Judy. So we're going to have to move together. Okay, and I'll stand in the back because I'm incredibly tall. All right. Goody bags with Matthew swag. Now I can read the official announcement. To our participants, congratulations on completing the program. We appreciate the time and interest you've invested in learning about our community and how local government works. Your engagement helps make Matthews stronger and more connected. And on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for your commitment to be informed and involve citizens. We hope you'll continue to stay engaged whether by serving on a committee, volunteering, or simply sharing what you've learned with your neighbors. Congratulations again, and thank you for being part of Matthews One-on-One. Maureen, when is our next Matthews One-on-One? Every fall, so you have to wait a year. But if you're interested, please contact Maureen, and she'll set you up. It's a great program. Thank you. And let's give Maureen a big round of applause for doing a great job. All right, we're going to move on to public comment. Our first speaker is just Alex, no last name. Do we have an Alex that'd like to speak?
Alex Freeman, ten-three-one-two, Idlewild. Firstly, I want to extend my congratulations to everyone who won a seat on this board last Tuesday, both the candidates currently serving and those getting ready to serve their first term. I've disagreed with some of you folks, but I'm ready to put that behind us now. You all ran a tremendous campaign, and I'm sure that your financiers, Poppis Properties, will be thrilled with the return on their investment. Brook Chase Properties in Summit Rock will be eagerly elated to bring forward their new monstrosities before what is now, without question, the most developer-friendly board Matthews has ever seen. Anytime former mayors, sitting officials, and private developers coordinate to funnel money towards select candidates, that's not democracy, that's a business deal. Mayor Higden, you said you didn't accept any developer money, yet the man behind the Matthews first PAC, the one whose home it was registered to, one over there, somehow ended up standing right next to you on Election Day at Elizabeth Lane Elementary. Right there with you were Jim Taylor and Lee Myers, two of the four people who were fully aware that developer money was being moved through the PAC to assist your campaign. What a remarkable coincidence that the very people acting as intermediaries between the developers and candidates all just happened to gather together at the same polling place, laughing and talking and campaigning. What do you think the odds are of that coincidence? I also want to address a matter with the Matthews Methodist Church. It is now known that a church mailing list was used to send out political endorsements, and the members on that list were not informed that their personal information would be used in this way. If this action was coordinated or done with the knowledge of church leadership, this is deeply concerning. Churches serve as moral centers in our community, not campaign distribution networks. If this mailing list was used unbeknownst to church leadership, I think there is a whole different set of questions that must be posed. The public has a right to understand where those boundaries are. Sir Urban, who's not here tonight, I was going to say it was good to see you tonight, and I'm glad that so many in our community have now had the opportunity to meet you as well. This was quite an exchange the other day. Imagine walking forty feet just to lose your composure because somebody pointed out, using your own campaign filings, that Jeffrey Smith, an Executive Vice President of Terwilger Poppis, directly contributed to your campaign. That's an awfully strange thing to get so angry about. Here's a thought, sir. If you don't want to be seen as working for the developers, perhaps don't take money directly from the developers. And that performance too, oh, oh, push on me, push on me, caught on video and pretending you were hit. I'd resign in disgrace for behavior like that. Childish, embarrassing, shameful. My favorite quote I saw compared you to a soccer player flopping. Tell me, will the Town Commission be requesting the school's security footage so everybody can see how far Mr. Urban walked to confront me? Or are we planning to keep that quiet because the footage might tell a story that's a little too inconvenient? And finally, quick one this week, Bob, my man, my main man Bob, Psycho Fent Bob. You're the man who celebrated the murder of Charlie Kirk, the same person who called a murdered man a child groomer and claimed his job was to preach misogyny and bigotry to students. Those were your own words. And yet, Mayor Higden, you've kept him in a voluntary town position, a representative of our community. Somehow, in an official role, someone in an official role says something that vile, and your response is silence. So should we take that silence as approval? Because that's kind of what it looks like, and you're shaking your head yes, which is troubling to me. That's what I have. Thank you, guys. Dana Vipers and I like it.
Before I have the next speaker come up, I want to say that I'm old enough to remember ABC Hall of Famer, radio personality Paul Harvey. Some of you may remember him. And Paul Harvey, for a period of many decades, had a bit on the radio played five times a week called "The Rest of the Story." And he would use the bit to inform citizens about some little-known fact about some historical thing that had happened in the United States. And he'd always conclude with, "And now you know the rest of the story." And I think the incident that Mr. Freeman referred to with Commissioner Urban, we haven't heard the rest of the story. And I look forward to Commissioner Urban coming back so that he can defend himself to the accusations that have been levied tonight, and also to the heavily edited clip that has been posted everywhere on the web. It's, I think the rest of the story lies in the thirty seconds previous to the clip that was posted, and I can't wait to see that. Commissioner Garner, did you have a comment?
Well, Mayor, I had anticipated this being a part of our public comment tonight. I think that there are documents out there that do tell the rest of the story, but I am not sure it's really worth it to even respond, so thank you for the opportunity.
Next speaker we have is Brandon Mills. Mr. Mills?
Hi, my name is Brandon Mills, and I'm at four oh seven Main Street. Well, I had a comment prepared, and I am not currently sitting on the council, so I would like to tell the rest of the story. So I can actually say that through, I think it would be actually a very interesting thing to pull the rest of the video maybe from somewhere else. It's interesting how heavily edited you can tell that that is the very beginning. And the disparaging remarks that were made and the name-calling that was done directly to Commissioner Urban, I thought was a very upsetting thing to have happen. When we talk about the term childish being thrown around for commissioners, I think using derogatory speech in front of someone is actually quite shameful. And I know you're pretty close with, well, candidate Dedmond, who was nice enough to stand outside of a polling place and tell me, "Screw you," and I thought you were smarter than that for believing that I would be able to have a conversation with him. So I would highly encourage the Matthews public to take a look at video that you asked to be pulled or whatever else it might be, because there are multiple witness statements about the things that were said beforehand. As far as addressing more childish behavior, I was actually party to the same person making those comments, breakdancing and disparaging other members of the public outside of the previous polling places that were discussed. Additionally, even though the Matthews PAC was registered to an address, I don't really know that that's something that we need to, that determines what it's actually going to represent. I don't know that the mailing address of the PAC itself is relevant on what the PAC believes in. It is easy enough to say all of these different things and create an ad hoc argument that automatically throws someone onto the defensive without actually bringing up any other information to prove the point. Some of the other comments that were made specifically about the developer endorsements I had asked previously for more information on, I wanted to see, not only were these developer endorsements assigned, which we can see on the reporting, however, what percentage of those development endorsements were actually part of the entire campaign finance? Asking that over and over and over again, it hasn't been provided. So I would like to see some of those answers given as we are, as the public, members of the public continue to stand and disparage the members of the council. I just think that there needs to be some accountability in the things that are being said. However, I want to say thank you to the council members that currently serve, especially the veterans as we walk up on Veterans Day, and to address the newly-elected council members in the room as well. As a small business owner, I think that it's important that our downtown commercial zones remain vibrant, accessible, and welcoming to all residents and visitors. I would like to continue to see the local government listen to the needs of small businesses, especially concerning parking, foot traffic, signage, and the rising costs affecting our businesses. Continue to invest in what makes Matthews unique, our walkability, our historic character, our independent businesses, while still planning for responsible growth and change. The voice of the entrepreneurs is respected. Workers and residents here as well, who may feel underrepresented, continue to remain heard, especially since roughly one-third of our voters looked for a different direction for this particular council. So thank you again, and congratulations to those of you who were elected, and hopefully we can get a little more proof into the things that are being said soon. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Would anybody else in the audience care to make a public comment this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. I'd like to ask for a motion to recess our regular meeting for public hearing on application to amend the unified development ordinance and land use map of the town of Matthews. So moved. A motion by Commissioner McCool, second by our Mayor Pro Tem Hoover. Any discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. I'd like to ask our Planning Director Jay Kemp to introduce the Planning Board members present tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are here on the first two rows, we have Bill Gibson, Lisa Sanchez, Howie Laviner, Susan Chambers. Second row, Bob Jackson, John Tonello, Martin Todys, and then Chris Cusar on the third row, hiding out back there. And thank you all for coming out on this wintery evening for our, with our lack of agenda items for you to review during public hearing. Thank you.
You know, I say it quite frequently, and I'll say it again, our planning board, we ask probably to do more volunteer work than any other board, and so we very much appreciate your efforts. First zoning application tonight is twenty twenty-four eight eleven, Four Oak Builders, four oh nine West John Street, tax parcel two two seven oh two six eleven. This was R twenty to OCD, and it's continued from October thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've not received any updates from the applicant on this item. They are requesting a continuance to January twelfth. With the changing of the board in December, we just pushed this to next calendar year.
Motion to continue the public hearing until January twelfth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Garner. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I'll now entertain a motion to reconvene our regular meeting. So moved. Motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Mayor Pro Tem Hoover. All in favor? All right. All right, we're going to move on to planning and development business. Our first item under consideration today, nine A elevations for Acadia Matthews Residential Town Homes. This was continued from October thirteenth.
All right, very quick update here. The applicant has submitted side elevations of the proposed townhomes at Acadia Matthews. They've been attached to your package. That's the only substantial update. Front elevations remain unchanged. Happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Jay?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised side elevations.
A motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Threet. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Move on to Item Nine B, Master Sign Plan for Acadia Matthews. Mr. Holman? Ladies and gentlemen, Darren Holman.
Sorry about that. You were moving through the agenda quicker than I thought you would. Right, so... Right, so we just have the master sign plan for Acadia Village Matthews. So we've done a few of these in the past this year. So with the master sign plans, it's really more about just kind of shifting around the signs that they are allowed to have on the site. Usually, like if there's a grocer on site that want a bigger allotment or a larger allotment for wall signage, so you can take it from the smaller tenants and just kind of move the square footage to the larger tenants. So this is at the intersection of Stallings Road and Idlewild Road. The property is on the mix of R fifteen CD, Mud District Business Highway CD, single, small residential neighborhood, concentrated multifamily, and residential, very styled. Again, just master sign plans, they are more of a reconfiguration of the allotment. And then the proposed signage that they have in the application, it is under what the maximum cap would be. So they're under their maximum wall signage by about six hundred and seventy square feet, and they're under their freestanding by low over three thousand square feet. So it is smaller in nature. I will just dive straight into the package. So this is the site as a whole. So the master sign plan does govern the location of the signs on the buildings where they're located. So this is just kind of the mix of the wall signs as long, as well as like the freestanding and smaller directional signs on the site. There are tables breaking down the individual signs for each one and adding up the totals. And again, we do have totals for all of the wall signage and the freestanding signage on the site. And the green indicates that there is a surplus of allotment. Right, so I mentioned the grocery stores. So one of the users is the Publix. As we mentioned, Publix is taking some of the sign allotment from the smaller tenants and using it towards the building. So they would be going up to a hundred and fifty-six square feet of signage for the main sign, and then there would be a smaller wall sign up to seventy-eight square feet, along with pharmacy drive-through signs. And then we do have smaller tenants, so we've got the placement on the buildings. These would be, these particular buildings, they would be up along Idlewild Road, right there at Stallings Road where the new roundabout will be going. And we have some of the multi-tenant buildings back towards the town center.
Darren, as you go through these, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you tell, do you know a little bit about the lighting that goes with them so that we can kind of understand them more holistically, or do you have those details? The lighting, like if they're...
Internally or externally illuminated? So the applicant hasn't committed to either doing internally or externally. The underlying districts will allow, or kind of govern that. Based off of the, because of the Mud District and the other ones, they do allow internally illuminated and externally illuminated.
Is that something the applicant can, will tell us about when they, or were they planning to come up and talk about it a little bit?
Yeah, I think that's something that the applicant could follow up with.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Schumacher with Poppis Properties. We do have a couple representatives of the Southwood, who is the designers of the signage plan and the signage, and as you, as you want to articulate questions, so they can help you with those answers.
Hello, I'm Bill Kimery with Southwood.
Robert Seethothos of Southwood.
So most of these signs would be channel letters with your standard internal illumination. We are leaving it up to have options right now, so...
Sorry, sir, could you stand up to the mic?
Most of these signs are standard channel letters that are internally illuminated. We are given the option to do facelit or backlit channel letters.
I guess maybe, this is not my, you know, realm of expertise by any means, so I guess I'm curious what, you know, in, I guess I'm curious how disruptive that may be to the area or not disruptive. You know, it sounds, I mean, to me, when I'm imagining a sign, something that's got the lighting built in is obviously more appealing than a giant sign that's fully illuminated. So did you think about that when you were going through the site plan? Can you kind of tell me a little bit more about the thought process of how you planned this out?
Yes, these are very standard retail kind of lighting. It is not a bright light that just rubs anything in the neighborhood or in the parking lot. It's, you would see it on pretty much any kind of retail outlet that's available now. The lighting is just so you can read the letters. It's not to shine light into the parking lot or anything like that. And then you also have the option to do the ones that the light shines backwards and just kind of puts a halo around the word on the wall, so they could do either.
And how much, sorry, can I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
And this is probably, this is either for Darren or for Daniel, but when we're looking at this and making these considerations, is it just a yes to the packet or a, how much input do we have here?
So at least from my experience, the board has been able to make asks. Typically, there are, I don't want to say... Typically, there are, I don't want to say limitations, but typically, there aren't really design requirements unless the applicant is requesting for a 15% sign bonus, which they're not doing in this case. So really, we're just kind of looking at the signage allotment.
Question I had was to you or Jay, we have an ordinance regarding how much candle power or whatever, I remember lumens or something. So it would be in full compliance with our ordinance, correct?
It would need to be correct.
Thank you.
All right, and so. Oh no, it's fine. Are you controlling? Oh. Right, so we did see some of the, like, the main entrance sign or the main monument sign. So it would be a multi-tenant sign, Publix with the underlying tenants, and then the directional signs as well. And this. The sign package does also include wall signage for the active adult building and the wellness center that's adjacent to it. The maximum sign heights for the districts are 10 feet. So all of the monument signs would stay under that 10-foot requirement. And we get, and we have close-ups of some of the directional signage. The standalone tenants up along Ottawa Road, they would have their own individual freestanding signs. Those would be seen here. They would not be allowed to be placed onto the multi-tenant sign though. So it would just be single-site signage for them. And then they've also included some signage for the single-family detached homes up by Ottawa Road as well. So we've got a mix of commercial and residential buildings. And then that concludes the staff report. Are there any additional questions?
Any questions? Comments? Motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the master sign plan for Acadia Village Matthews.
I second.
Motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Three. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item 9C, Site Plan Amendment for Crown Point Commons. Mr. Will.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. This is a site plan amendment to a site that was zoned MUD, mud, in 2014. It's taken us back a little ways. The parcel location is at Sam Newell and Rice Road. You can kind of see, it's highlighted here and then the surrounding area. Here's just the zoning map. It's close to Independence Boulevard, so a lot of commercial around it, a little bit of residential across the street and some churches. And I think I have, I hope I have. No, I didn't. Let me go on this one. This, the, sort of the Page South site was the site of the old movie theater that was torn down. The Northern site had a small daycare on it. It's mostly wooded right now. But, so they're, they're pretty vacant right now. This is the site plan that was approved in almost three years ago, 1114, 2022. It is a mixed-use development with. The original unit count was 335 units, I believe. Let me check my notes here. 332 units. And it also included some retail. You can see those two, retail A and B labeled, as well as office building. So the adjusted site plan is right here. It looks very similar, and I'm going to go over what the changes are on my next slide. But basically, what we have is the addition of 28 studio units and 17 one-bedroom units. So they're adding a total of 45 bedrooms to the site plan. However, they are also removing some. There's some of the larger, some of the two-bedroom, the seven of the two-bedroom units and 15 of the three-bedroom units are being removed. So basically, what's going on here is we're changing the unit count, the unit mix of different types of, different types of apartments that will be located in this area. The total addition of 20, there's a total addition of 23 units, but a reduction of 14 bedrooms. Now, that results in no change in footprint or the need for more parking spaces. The reason for that is they are just reconfiguring the internal aspects of the buildings. And they were overparked to begin with, with 1.4 spaces per unit. The actual requirement is 1.25 spaces for the larger units. So they were a little overparked and allowed them to change the unit count without adding additional parking. The elevations that were approved in 2022 are not being changed. So typically, we would see that come before the board, but their approved elevations are staying the same. And finally, the staff recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment for the following reasons. I'll just read through these real quick. Number one, gain of affordable units. 10% of the total units are to be reserved for households, 80% or less of the area median income for Matthews. That was part of the original site plan agreement for not less than 15 years. So by adding units, we're gaining a few affordable units out of that because it's 10, it's a percentage, not a hard number. There's no change in the building footprint or need for additional parking spaces. There's no change in the non-residential square footage, so they're not trading non-residential for more residential. It remains a pedestrian-friendly mixed-use development. And staff feels that is a negligible increase in daily traffic, if any, due to an overall reduction in bedrooms. There was approved TIA that was done. The final version was December of 2023, and it requires a connection of Rice Road and a traffic signal at that location. So those improvements are going to be a part of this development. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here as well, if I can answer them.
I don't know that I have a question. I have a comment. It seems rather obvious to me that if you remove three-bedroom units, which are probably a single parent or two people with children, and replace them with 20, add 23 single units, which nearly everybody, one of those will probably drive, even though it's overparked, you are increasing the number of cars on this site, and that, that's very concerning. And I'm also concerned that this change is being, you know, put forth at this very late date in this process. You don't need to respond to that. I'm just making a comment. Mr. Three?
Thank you, sir.
Will, on the site plan, we see Claire Drive written here. It's not in place at the present. Will the developer be the one developing that road that runs from Sam Newell to Independence? Who's going to be responsible for Claire Drive? Do you see that?
This, can I, this right here?
No, actually, it's further down. If you go to the other, the one with your stars on it.
Oh, right, right.
You see, if you see there, there's a Claire Drive that runs from Sam Newell to Independence. Who's responsible for that? Go up one.
Yep, this is Claire Drive, right here. It is only partially developed. So Claire Drive does not actually go all the way through to Sam Newell. The developer will be responsible for extending what is now East Point Drive to as close to Claire as possible. There's some parcels in between there that we can't connect yet, but the vision is to connect to Claire. The developer's responsibility.
Well, how many, I mean, I'm really saying that it looks like it's connected to Independence Boulevard and Sam Newell, according to this design, not connecting to Rice Road or any of that circle there. You see what I'm talking about? Those two? From Sam Newell to Independence, that's not even on the, it's not even developed.
Right, yes.
But the portion that the developer, that portion that's connected in front of their property, are they going to provide that portion? Or with curb and gutter sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
And then DOT is responsible for the remaining portion? Who's responsible, or is the town responsible for it?
It is a DOT road. That's an excellent question. There is a DOT project that is planned in this area through the transportation impact analysis process. We had coordinated with DOT, and basically whoever comes in first, DOT or the developer, has to do those improvements along Sam Newell and sort of the connection of Rice Road through Sam Newell.
Put your marker on that top portion of that. Will they, developer do that road there, Claire? The developer will do that portion, sidewalk and gutter?
No, that will just be, that will just be a connection from this East Point, I think is the name, to close to Claire. It will not be all the way through to Claire Drive.
But their property is adjacent to it, is what I'm asking. Why were we not requiring them to do sidewalk and gutter adjacent to their property? We normally do that.
We do, yes, sir. Let me move forward one.
Excuse me, Rob. Didn't you also say that Claire Drive would not punch all the way through anyway?
Claire Drive does not punch all the way through.
And they're not going to do that.
There, there is a little strip of land that is not owned by the town, so they can't punch through to Claire Drive. That's correct.
No, I meant Claire Drive to.
Oh, to Sam Newell. I'm sorry. Yes, I understand. No, that, that is not, that will not punch through there, from Claire Drive to Sam Newell.
And, and why not?
Well. Gosh, this was the.
I think that's what you were asking, Commissioner Three, correct?
Yeah, okay.
On their property. I'm not saying that portion that's adjacent to businesses that are already there, but if the developer is developing on that road, why would they not do curb and gutter and sidewalks to the adjacent property to them? I mean, they're right there at the road.
I can answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
There's a parcel that you cannot see on this map. The area is shaded in green on the right. It's flag-shaped. It goes from Crown Point Common Extension Claire Drive all the way to Sam Newell. So there's a, it's about an eight or 10-foot wide parcel owned by a private individual. So this, this developer does not have frontage on Claire Drive. It is separated by about a eight or 10-foot wide strip.
Okay.
Actually owned by the Harley-Davidson dealership.
Okay, how convenient that was. Thank you.
That was my comment. Commissioner Fano, do you have a comment?
I have a question. What was the date of the original presentation which the board approved? I'm looking at the minutes now. I'm trying to find the date.
Okay. There's been a number of iterations. The latest date was 1114, 2022?
1114?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garner.
Well, I was going to say about the Claire Drive part of that, was that conversation with, was it Kinger Homes? And the neighborhood was concerned about too much connectivity going through. And so if I'm, I mean, Jay, you might remember better than I do, but there was some conversation about not wanting that to punch through to Sam Newell and not wanting the other, I don't remember all the streets, but it was, it was not just this, but there were those two zoning actions that had some impact on the decision about Claire Drive.
We, we held an input session with the neighborhood, probably a year or two ago, kind of lightly attended, but it was a mixed bag of reactions. Some folks were really worried about cut-through traffic. Others appreciated the access to local streets. Once U2509 is built and access becomes more difficult on Independence Boulevard, but, you know, there were some pros and cons to it from the neighborhood's perspective.
Are there any other questions for Rob? Comments? Applicants is here.
I do have a question. Is that property still in non-compliance? And is something happening with that, with the storage on surface level?
Oh, the Tesla parking lot? They, funny story. I made a determination as zoning administrator that they were not in compliance with their approved site plan. That, that determination is, was appealed to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment overturned my determination. So the outdoor storage, parking of vehicles is permitted on this site right here, but not the other one. So they, yeah, they're in compliance based on that action from the Board of Adjustment.
An additional question. May Jay or Will, the extension that runs from Sardis Road North, that will eventually, a DOT project will connect to Crown Point, I mean, Sam Newell. Is that true? Do we have a date or a possible time when that construction might continue? Because that will impact this project, but just, that's just from my own thinking, ultimately.
There is a pending development plan. City of Charlotte approved a large rezoning for all of that vacant land at the terminus of Sardis North and 74. It will be multifamily, commercial. Some of those roads that would connect into Matthews are still to be determined. As you know, that 2509 has been segmented. I don't have those dates in front of me, but we can get back to you.
Commissioner Fano. Commissioner McCool.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan amendment as recommended in the memo begrudgingly.
I'll begrudgingly second that.
I'd like to ask our attorney if we have a legal basis to not approve this.
Well, the, as the, as the staff report indicated, the way that the parking was calculated, the shift from three bedrooms to the studio apartments, while it had a negligible impact on the parking formula, did not take it out of compliance at the UDO, so you don't have a basis to deny it on that, that front. And then past that, going back to the original 2014 rezoning, there was no unit limit put on the, on that particular rezoning. And so And so in the, specifically in the conditional notes, it did not give us the ability to revisit that at that time. In the 2022 site plan approval, there was reference to the units. But again, under the 2014 rezoning, the authority is only reserved for if it footprint changes. And so, and then like site plan elements such as if the parking changed. So that was a long-winded answer to say would be that not really. You do, that this is pretty much a perfunctory technical amendment.
All right, I'd.
Actually, I have a question on that. So since this is a board decision, if individual members of the board vote against it and the board still approves it, then that's okay too, correct?
The board acts as, as one.
Yes, sir.
I mean, the board acts as one voice to majority vote.
Majority vote, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garner.
One last question. This, this plan has come before us several times now in my tenure is, and so we just have to stand by the 2014 decision. Is that true? I mean, can they keep coming back and deciding they want to, you know, add as many units until the parking lot is full as possible?
Without addressing that hypothetical, I will say that they, that, that what they've, they've done here with the math is, is within the bounds. As long as they stay within those bounds and do not impact the footprint of what was approved, then that's my opinion.
And so I, I think for a lot of the future board members are here, this is a great lesson for language in the future, that this doesn't happen again. Is, is there, could we ask the applicant that, that tonight, as if we make this, if, if we vote in favor, is it, could we also ask that this be the maximum number of units allowable on the property?
You can ask, I mean.
Okay. So before, I did second that vote, but before we move on, I would hate to see this continue to come back before the boards as historical memories lapse, that this is not an ongoing issue with this particular parcel. Is the applicant willing to, to cap their number of units at, at this decision point tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board Commissioners, I'm John Carmichael here with Yuri Vancen with Vanna. Are you asking, to amend, like, so it would be capped no matter what you do? If you come in with a new site plan, the number of units would be capped? I, I don't think that's something that Mr. Vancen is willing to agree to tonight. I mean, this is the plan that he's presenting and that has a maximum number of units, but I don't, I don't think he's in a position to say that he would never come back in for another site plan amendment with a different number, just to be honest with you, Commissioner Garner.
And, and I certainly understand that because we are sort of in a tough.
We weren't prepared for that question either.
Right, we were in sort of a tough spot, but I think when boards make a decision, they expect some revision possibly. Most of these projects don't come back with some revision. But knowing that this is, I mean, we have, we keep seeing this project frustrating that our decision isn't being adhered to over time. And so I will say that, somebody exiting the board that I made a decision, I voted for something that is not being adhered to and it's frustrating. If this were a discussion that were present all along, we would have had this discussion a long time ago. So I just want, I want to put that out there as a, like, not a great practice for, for a development.
Well, I respect, I respect your feelings. The, the changes here, as, as Mr. Will said, are all internal to the building. I do understand that there's a 23 unit, there would be, if approved, a 23 unit increase in the number of multifamily and then a corresponding 14 unit decrease in the number of bedrooms. I mean, Mr. Vancen's hopeful that he, I think your desire is to move forward as exponentially as possible to develop the site, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I, I don't think he wants to, he'd like to come back before the board on an entirely different project, but I think he doesn't have a strong desire to come back and discuss this one again. I think he wants to move forward and develop the project.
On that note, I'll say something to, that I said to somebody else recently this week, and that when you do come before the board, you want to leave in a favorable light. Because if you do want to develop in the future, you want that to be the, the memory implanted in the minds of the commissioners. And for me, certainly this doesn't, this practice of coming back and changing and adding units doesn't do that.
I just want to comment that your, your comments are well taken. But the reason we're coming back, because it was approved almost three years ago. And the reason this project, the number of reasons, right? It took us over a year just to get a traffic study done and approved about a year and a half. And then market condition changed. And so there were economic reasons why we couldn't get back. Now, recently we have done some extensive studies and feasibility studies on what size of units are marketable at this point. And we came up to conclusion, again, it's been a long market resource that have, have been done. And we determined that three-bedroom units, and there was, I don't remember how many, but there was way too many three-bedroom units that were determined that it will take significantly longer to lease out. So our architects came with a plan to expand some common spaces. So as part of this change, it's not just unit addition, but within some of the buildings, we added some common areas for, for residents, including some bike shops. And for, for the parcel on the left, we needed to add some space to, for like leasing office and some other activities. So what I'm trying to say that it wasn't just driven by, you know, we were here to make some changes, but these changes were well taught and it took us a while to gather. But we're finally here, there's permits have been submitted for the whole site, for land development, for architecture, for everything. So we're at this point in final stages to get in that off the ground.
Yeah, I'd just like to say this is exceptionally frustrating. I'm not happy at all, but I, since we have no legal basis to, to vote against it, I do want to ask our planning director that we immediately, perhaps with the beginning of the new board, change our UDO, because I don't want to ever have a limitless density cap on a, on a project ever again. Because this is, this is lesson learned. I will vote for this this time, but I don't want to ever, ever do it again. I don't enjoy changes this late into the game, particularly when you're adding a significant number of units. I don't think it's fair to the board if it's not respectful of the decision we made previously. Commissioner Fano?
Yes, looking at the previous notes, 11/14/2022, I see where we approved the site plan notes and elevations. Has there been any other site plan votes since then? I've been doing a cursory search in the minutes since that date, and I can't seem to find any. Can anyone recall if there's been site plans brought before the board changing this for approval as well? No? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McCool. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Garner, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes four to two. Thank you. All right, move on to the consent agenda, item 10.
Motion to approve the only consent agenda item. I think that's the first time we've had one item on the consent.
It's the first time ever, I can remember. We have a second? We have a motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Mayor Pro Tem Hoover, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Move on to new business, consider adoption of building code ordinance, Mr. Camp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a little bit of an unusual item. I spend most of my time swimming around the Unified Development Ordinance. This would be a proposed change to our general ordinances. Over the past year, we have had some enforcement issues. I think of some of you all heard about some problem properties in the town, commercial properties. Through inter-local agreement, Mecklenburg County enforces our building code on our behalf. In working with them to solve some issues at several properties, we came to understand that our code today only addresses minimum housing. It's only a residential code. We do not have enforcement mechanisms for non-residential structures, for safety for the public, well-being, potential issues with commercial structures. So we can issue them fines, we can issue citations, we can clean the property up, we can put liens on the property, but we have no further levers that we can pull to compel a property owner to bring a site into compliance or to make it safe for the public. So that, all that being said, we took a look back at our ordinance. It's 11 pages long, what's on the books today? Five pages of that was adopted in 1972 and is devoted to building insulation. Back in 1972, the town was very concerned about insulation.
It was colder back then, yeah.
So be that as it may, we are proposing to add a non-residential building code to the town's general ordinances. This would be a new chapter, 152, in our general code. This would provide language provisions for the repair, vacation or demolition of structures that for any cause endanger life, limb, health, property or safety, welfare of the general public or their occupants. This will give us a, and I'm reading this here from the memo here, framework to deal with complaints, hold hearings, issue orders, liens and civil penalties. Again, that all would be done on our behalf by Mecklenburg County Code Enforcement Staff. I will say, in working with them, they said, by the way, Huntersville has a great code. We've been enforcing that for them for 12 years. So we have adapted this pretty much verbatim from Huntersville's ordinance that they've been using for the last 12 years. And it, it is all attached, if you have any questions about it. But it is something we are eager to get on the books because, you know, unfortunately, as the town ages, so do our buildings, and this will not be the last time that we have issues with older commercial structures within our town.
Commissioner McCool.
I'll make a motion that we adopt chapter 152, non-residential building code.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Garner, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Move on to item 11B, consider installation of metal detectors in Town Hall, this, Commissioner Garner.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot to add to this, it's just sort of a, a general discussion about security in Town, in Town Hall. I mean, it's clear on the door downstairs that it's illegal to carry a weapon on the property. Was thinking about when we onboarded in the 2019 election, so it was early January 2020, we had an active shooter training. We haven't done that since then. But certainly just want to bring forward this discussion about, you know, manageable ways to possibly have metal detectors at the entrances. Obviously, it won't impact my role here on the board, but thinking about future boards, wanted to know if, if the board as a whole is interested in asking the police chief for some input on this or to come back with some ideas and present that as a discussion for upgrades to Town Hall.
I'd like to direct a question to Lori or Town Manager. Do we have any information on other communities, whether or not they use metal detectors? I know Charlotte does, but.
We are still gathering information from our communities around us, but so far the smaller town halls do not, the larger cities do. So Charlotte, yes, Mint Hill, for example, no.
And Commissioner Garner, were you thinking about metal detectors for this entire building or just for this room, or what were your thoughts?
My thoughts were for the upstairs, certainly. I mean, again, it's clear on the door that weapons should not be brought on premises, but I, I didn't have much thought beyond that, except that that active shooter drill, you know, really ingrained in me the importance of security. We have officers who come and, you know, stay with us through the meetings. Just really wanted to gauge the board's temperature on this. And then also find out, I mean, you know, it could be talking to the police chief and he may feel like this is totally, you know, an off-the-wall idea, not, doesn't, is not warranted. But before taking it to him and asking him for any sort of input, we need to, to move forward as a board.
Commissioner McCool.
Yeah, I, I seconded this to get this on the agenda. I, I think Renee and I have spoken about this for six years. You know, again, unsure how necessary it is, but I think it would be at least reasonable to have the chief of police and staff look into it, especially with the increasing political violence in our world nowadays. And so I think it can't hurt to at least look into. I mean, when we go to Carpo, mayor, you know, we're frisked to get into the government center. And so, you know, as we grow as a community, you never know what can happen. So I think it's at least worth looking into.
Commissioner Fano.
Yes, Renee, would this be for all day or just during meeting times?
Really, I'm just asking that we, you know, get a, ask the police chief to make recommendations. And again, his recommendation may be it's not warranted and not necessary. Or he may come back and say, you know, I think we could have an officer on duty with a wand for board meeting nights, or he could say to put up stands that are metal detectors when you enter. It, it would be entirely, I'm not the expert on this, I'm just.
The reason I was asking, I mean, I'm all for increased security, but is there a police officer here, this, I'm asking out of ignorance, is there a police officer in, on this floor all day during business hours?
No, sir.
So if it was, if it was installed during business hours, then there'd have to be a police officer there to monitor it. So these are questions that would need to be asked of our police chief.
Is the chief still here? Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Hoover.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Do we have security cameras as you come up and in? Does that record?
I, there's, yes, I think.
Okay.
Commissioner Three.
You know, when I saw this on the agenda, I, it raised a number of flags. From my law enforcement experience, the setting in this building is not where the greater threat would be. It would be outside of the building, in the parking lots, as people are coming and going. And secondly, I'm challenged about requiring the public to go through that. And I don't know if we have enough concern to warrant raising that bar. But I am curious to know what the police chief says and some of the other officers have to say. But I, I don't see the threat there that warrants that level of security at this point. But I'm just one of seven.
Would you like me to loop the chief in on sort of the discussion?
Sure, but I'm not sure that this is our chief, because this gentleman has a beard.
I would say it's no shade November.
All right, Commissioner Garner, go ahead.
Chief, I, I just brought up to the board and, and wanted to get, to gauge the, the board's support on whether to ask you to look into security measures for Town Hall. And it's really just a general discussion at this point, but we felt like it was, the first step is to get the board to agree. And the second step would be to ask you if, you know, if you feel like there are, it's warranted to have metal detectors in Town Hall. If so, you know, what that looks like and how, how it would be managed. So very general question, very general discussion, but any input that you have would be appreciated.
Yes, I, I do believe that's warranted to at least look into and see what type of measures that we need to put in place with today's climate. In the world that we live in, you can never be too cautious. We have certain things in place.
Yeah, I, I agree, I would bond, looking into it. I was serving on this board when we had the unfortunate shooting and, and death at Butler High School. So it's certainly something that has happened here in our town, and so we're not the. And so we're not the small sleepy town we once were. There's, there is a lot of, uh, um, violence. I don't think I would be in favor of having metal detectors for all the public, like downstairs or all the time, but maybe certainly for these meetings. Like to at least look into it. I think being more secure is better than being less secure. I'd rather be safe than sorry.
I think we probably need a motion to direct staff to do that.
Kurt, did you have a comment?
I just had a question for Commissioner Garner. Excuse me. Um, what's the timing? Like, do you want this back on the 24th?
I, I think it would be up to staff's discretion. It's, I mean, I'm bringing this forward as a conversation starter. I don't know, um, you know, I don't know if it, if the chief has any ideas already or, um, what his timeline looks like. So I think it would be, again, up to, up to staff. I would expect this was prob, is probably a decision for the next board, though. I mean...
If you like for me, I can have something ready for the 24th, or we can wait till the new board comes on. Take your lead or guidance on that.
What do you prefer?
I would rather, uh, forward to get on the agenda is really only a week and a half. So I, I would rather not make that commitment. If we can, we will. But particularly the survey question about what others are doing of our size and how they're doing it, I think would take a little bit of time.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to direct the town manager, to direct staff to at least start looking into the idea of increased security at Town Hall. Is that reasonable?
I'll second that.
And we have a motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Garner. Any further discussion? Commissioners Fano?
Yes, obviously this investigation or analysis would include costing as well.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think, um, the, the majority of the cost would be in Manning, something of that nature for, and depending on how long we head it up. But, um, any event, we've got a motion, a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes five to one with Commissioner Three voting no. Move on to the mayor's report. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Well, I want to say that we lived through another election season. I want to thank the public that came out to vote and, uh, and we, we move on as, and we'll have an opportunity on December 8th to see our, our new, newly elected sworn in and give the opportunity for, uh, those that are departing to, uh, pass along any last thoughts. So, uh, that'll be on December 8th. That's all of my mayor's report. Town attorney's report?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Town manager's report?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
All right, um, I'd like to call for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 31811A6 to discuss personnel matters to include the mayor, commissioners, town attorney, interim town manager, human resources director, and town clerk.
And real property?
And...
143.
Call for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 31811A5 to consider real property acquisition to include the mayor, commissioners, town attorney, interim town manager, assistant town manager, planning director, and town clerk. So we will start with the real property item in the Jordan Room. So I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Garner. All in favor? That passes unanimously.